Good evening. I would like to call the Peoria Public School District 150 Education Meeting for November 23rd, 2015. To order, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Floyd.
President.
Mrs. Coste.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Wilkman.
Here.
Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mrs. Butler.
Mrs. Ross.
Here. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is community recognition, and the first recognition is for Glen Oak Christian Church. Ms. Coste.
Good evening. Tonight, our Community Contribution Award recognizes Glen Oak Christian Church. Glen Oak Christian Church is known as an adoptive school partner to Glen Oak Community Learning Center and beginning the snack pack program at Glen Oak and now Valeska Hinton. But they have been involved in many more activities with our district. Glen Oak Christian School volunteer Kathy Cobb and others have joined us tonight and have provided us with a full history of the church's relationship with our schools. I would invite them to the podium to share some of this information with the public. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you so very much. I'm Kathy Cobb, volunteer from Glen Oak Christian Church, and as we mentioned, the church has had a 93, the church is 93 years on the East Bluff, and we began as a plant church, and sure enough, we had our first services in Glen Oak School at the corner of Atlantic and Republic. When the new school was built at the corner of Republic and Wisconsin, the church bought the old school building. And so for the 20s and 30s and 40s, the East Bluff grew, as did Glen Oak School and Glen Oak Christian Church. It was an area where children and families went to the school during the week and actually came to the church on the weekends. In the early 19, in 1946, the church unfortunately burned to the ground, but Glen Oak School opened up their doors, and for six months, we were able to worship right there at Glen Oak School while the building, the current building was rebuilt. In the 1960s, the collaboration continued in that we saw a need for early childhood, and we began a nursery school, Glen Oak Christian Nursery School, which was in operation for 38 years. And during that time, also, Peoria Public Schools had two classrooms in the church building that served special needs students in, who were three, four, and five. It was quite a collaboration. They were both there in the morning and in the afternoon. The teachers were able to share professional development supplies, and even today, we have several congregational members who started out in that three and four and five-year-old preschool program that was with District 150. In the 80s and 90s, the different parts of the school have changed, and Glen Oak, Glen Oak Church has had a collaboration with the school by providing tutors, library help, after-school tutoring, different cookies for the first day of the month, a variety of different things. Currently, Glen Oak School and the collaboration, Glen Oak School opens up their doors on Thursday evenings when we have a junior high boys' basketball program where there's 25 young men that are there. They have a sack lunch, they have a devotion, they play basketball. And in fact, Carlos Evans, who is one of the social workers at Glen Oak School, is one of the four mentors of this program. Great collaboration. Carlos knows the different young men and how to relate to them as they come for both activities and some mentoring at the same time. We also have used the church, the school building for different church meetings, different activities, both the grounds and the building. Glen Oak School has used the church building for planning purposes when the new built, when the new school was being planned. We hosted a three-day seminar with the architects. And we also have the site for the off-campus safe zone. If there would be a problem at the school, we can house all 900 children at the church, which is only two blocks away from the school. Probably one of the things that we are currently excited about is the snack pack program that has been in operation for four years, begun at Glen Oak, thinking that we knew or we saw, the assistant principal saw that there were children that were sort of sneaking their granola bars on Friday mornings after lunch, which of course is against the rules, but they were hungry on the weekends. And so I said, you know, maybe we could do something. And we thought if 10% of those children would fill out a form that said, yes, I'd like to participate, those are 90 sack lunches, we can easily do that, we'll put about 80 cents or a dollar in, and it'll be no problem. $90 a week would be great. We passed out the forms, and in a week and a half, we had 225 students already sign up. And by the end of the first year, over 600 students were participating. Yesterday at the church, we packed 1,100 snack packs that have already been delivered both to Glen Oak and to Valeska Hinton, who also began participating two years ago. We'd want to highlight that several of our congregational members are graduates of District 150. We have current students that are both at Glen Oak and at middle school and at high school, and all four, graduates of all four high schools. We also are pleased to recognize the late John Garrett, who was superintendent of District 150, as a former member. We also have a school board, former school board member, Mr. Bill Schwab. We have several retired principals and teachers and current teachers and administrators in our congregation. Here tonight, I'd want to recognize Ms. Scott from Glen Oak School, where she's, she's hiding over there. Oh, I'm sorry. And Mrs. Branscombe came in. I didn't see her, but I'll write her down on my sheet now that I see that she's there. So, we are so very pleased. The collaboration is just extensive, that what they have done for us. In addition, Mrs. Powers, who's hiding over here, Principal Valeska, is a, what, a third-generation Glen Oak Christian Church congregational member, and her fourth generation, she's brought her two little darlings that are at Keller that are kindergarten and second grade. You need to wave, Langston Leona. And then we would be remiss in not recognizing Larry Cobb, who is also a graduate of District 150, and is the muscle by carrying all those boxes and to put in the suburban and the other cars to load the snack packs each week. We also would want to recognize Ashley Pierce, who is our neighborhood outreach worker, and she is strong collaboration for us to connect with our East Bluff community in a variety of different ways. Does anyone have any questions?
I have some appreciation for you. That's pretty impressive. Can I give them a round?
I would like to thank the administrators for understanding the importance of this collaboration, Ms. Branscombe, Ms. Scott, Ms. Ross, Ms. Powers, and all of the teachers. This is amazing. This is beautiful. Thank you very much. It takes the entire village, and I love listening to the entire history. So you did a really nice job. Thank you very, very much.
Our next award, this award in recognition goes to the IHSA State Cross-Country Organizers, and Mr. Floyd is going to introduce our speaker for a special award.
Thank you, President Ross. We appreciate Peoria City Councilman Chuck Grab being here tonight to help us recognize the IHSA Cross-Country 2015 Meet as a tremendous success. The race is a great example of how the city of Peoria, Peoria Park District, and our schools can work together. The state meet weekend held on Saturday, November 7th this year fills hotels and restaurants. This time, I'd invite Councilman Grab, followed by Coach Lawless, to the podium for further remarks. Welcome.
When Mayor Artis asked me if I would like to come to this event and this school board meeting tonight, I readily said, yes, I would, for a number of reasons. First of all, I'm a graduate of Peoria High School, as number one. Number two, after graduating from Bradley University, I was hired to go back to Peoria High School to teach social studies, and taught at Peoria High School for some eight years before being assigned to Dean of Students position at Manuel, and then on to Adult Education. Also, Peoria High School is in District 2, and I'm the councilman for the heart of the city. We have five districts in the city. So for those reasons, I am very, very excited to be here. I'm also excited to be here because Peoria Public Schools District 150 is one of five school districts we have in the city of Peoria. It is by far the largest. And I would just state that Peoria Public Schools has curricula second to none and magnet programs second to none, and it provides an education second to none, and our students will continue to succeed. And I am very proud of what the district has been doing and what the teachers and the principals do every single day in the schools. And it is with distinct pleasure that I see all the improvements being made all over the district. And recently, not too long ago, Principal Elliott, I visited Peoria High School and saw all the upgraded labs and the expanded and improved facility. It doesn't begin to look like the Peoria High School where I taught. Science wing certainly looks a whole lot different, not to mention other areas of Peoria High School. Twenty million dollars spent there, the beautiful athletic fields. It's an exciting time to be a city councilman, and it must be an exciting time for you to be board members and superintendent, Desmoleen Karat, an exciting time for you to be superintendent. And now, from the office of the mayor, I bring a proclamation. Whereas Peoria High School has hosted the Illinois High School Association State Cross-Country Meet for the past 46 years, the Illinois State Cross-Country Meet is recognized annually as one of the premier meets in the entire nation. And whereas, over the past 46 years, the state meet hosted by Peoria High School has generated millions of dollars in tourism for the Peoria community. And whereas, the staggering task, and I remember volunteering to do this when I was a teacher, going out there to help, whereas the staggering task of conducting and tearing down the state meet venue has been the responsibility of the young people and volunteers that have made up the cross-country program over these 46 years. And whereas, historically, the Peoria High School staff, faculty, administration, athletic team, choral department, cheerleaders, and parents have been pivotal in the successful hosting of the Illinois High School Association State Cross-Country Meet, now therefore, I, Charles D. Grab, on behalf of Jim Artis, the third mayor of the city of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize Peoria High School for its many accomplishments in Peoria, Illinois, dated this 23rd day of November, 2015. Coach Lawless.
I'm going to give a real brief bio on the state meet. There'll be no filibustering as a former teacher of government. I'd like to start by saying, for 46 years, this school has hosted the state cross-country meet. Forty-six years ago, a young man named Bob LaCroix, head CC coach at Peoria High School convinced the IHSA that he and the administration were more than capable of conducting a meet like this. Mainly due to Bob's caring, the baby was born. Bob changed schools in 1985, but his vision continues to grow. For example, early on, there was one race during Bob's tenure. Then went to two races, two boys' races. No girls' race yet. Why? Girls can't run that far. In about 80, 88 or 89, they put a girls' race in there. Now we have six races per day. On that November day, we have a single A race, boys and girls, double A, boys and girls, and triple A, boys and From a paper and pencil scoring technique under Mr. LaCroix, to cutting-edge computer technology, we drastically changed. In the old days, when the kids finished, we had this massive, complicated shoot that took place. And it got pretty messy because of all kinds of body fluids. And so fortunately, through the efforts of these rather carefully talented computer people, Mr. Reblin's wife, they designed this, this large, large, large rug with chips in the bib, with these massive cameras, and now it's scored that way. When the kids cross the finish line, they can be ate to breast. In the old days, you had all the kids throw, why, this was open, and they'd fall down. It was unbelievably difficult to keep it in order. And because of that, that technology, we are recognized, as mentioned earlier, as one of the premier meet states in the country. For the last two decades plus, Chris Perry has served as meet manager, and his own touches to his vision. The first one surprised me. He wanted to put bleachers out there. And I said, who wants a bleacher at a cross-country meet? He was right, worked out well. Live broadcast during the meet, play-by-play over PA system at the park. He prepared professional medical teams available to serve youngsters who may need their name, and lots and lots of portie pots throughout the park. He knows the real problems how to be solved. Huge important. The IHSA from Shar Brandberg, who was my first, well, I was involved years ago, was the coordinator for the IHSA, to Ron McGraw, have given Peoria High School a steady leadership. Ron's retiring, and Ron's right here, so please stand, Ron. And he's retiring as the active director for the state meet. He's a hands-on guy, an old farm boy, I believe, aren't you? And a pleasure to work with. He'll be missed. Now the important stuff, the kids. Our passions for kids. And for 46 years, these kids have labored. Unknown. Unknown. We had a lot of kids, they are at Avid program on a field trip to Springfield. There's some kids right now with all the parents of kids, please stand for the CC team. And your siblings, whatever. I've got some facts on this. I did some calculation with pencil and pen and paper. Over 46 years, these kids from all those past teams, and you have to realize, all these teams have done the exact same thing every single year. It's truly amazing. Twenty miles of snow fence put up. Originally, an old nasty-looking wood fence, up and down. Forty-six miles of pennants have been put up and taken down. 23,000 fence poles and rebars put up and taken out. Tents up, all kinds of other duties during the course of the meet. And during bitter temperatures, also during driving rain, one year we had a blizzard and set up in a blizzard. And just like the previous 45 years, the CCC kids over here behind us have done this job very quietly and silently. And just like the earlier teams, they're full of young men and women who are going to make a difference in the world. There's no doubt about it. And so basically, our faculty and our staff are so proud of having these kids enrolled in our building. So thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize our principal of Peoria, Peoria High. Welcome. Keep up the good work. Okay, any announcements? Do we have any announcements? No? Okay, district presentations. Our first presentation is the tax levy presentation, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, President Ross. I had a short presentation just to go over our notes from our last meeting and remind the board what will be their privilege to vote on. Consent a genuine?
Give him just a minute so we can get out.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, President Ross. This short discussion will be a review of what we discussed last week about the step we're in in the statutory process of adopting a property tax levy. At this point in the year, we required, this is the next slide, to review our revenue projections and come up with an estimate of need from the property tax base. We've done that. We've looked at some growth assumptions in the, in the district total assessment, and based on the balance of our needs and our revenue sources, this being a district-wide profile of where the revenue sources for our nine funds come from. As you can see, property taxes pay for about 30% of services provided in the education fund, and other than transportation, 100% of services in all the other funds. The assumptions going into the tax, property tax discussion last week was that our local property growth, EAV, which is short for equalized assessed valuation, would increase by 2%. And we would continue to see the revenue from the state, general state aid, being prorated at around 90%. That our categorical funding would remain flat, our maintenance of effort, and SB 318, this huge elephant in the room, some reality takes form in, if not next calendar year, the next. And 318 is where we spent a lot of discussion, but here's just a graphic of where our property values have gone over the last 10 years. As evidenced on the left side of the graphic, as the country saw, we locally saw our own property values grow. And of course, we see the impact of the Great Recession, and as I commented last week, Peoria actually didn't do too bad in comparison to some other areas. I mean, if you look at some of the collar communities in the western suburbs, you would see dips of two to sometimes three times that of what we saw in 2012 and 2013, to where we're actually coming out in 2015 with a fair estimation of growth, working with people that we have conversations with at both city and county level. That's correct. So it's with also all those conversations and discussions that we estimate based on what was actually extended to the tax base last year. So these are the figures on your, on your left. Everything from 28, 29 million dollars in the educational fund down to 665,000 in our leasing fund, each having their special purpose. About 52.2 million for operational needs, and about 16.5 million in bond and interest needs. So this year, seeing a growth in that need to about 54.4 million, and a bond and interest request of 17.1. The total estimated growth in the levies, just under 4%. Two of the main drivers of that, though up in the top green box, is that estimated percent change from the 200, sorry, 2014 EAV of 2%. You know, this, as I'll summarize later, is an estimate of our, of our very large growth. We're talking about 1.3 billion of property value that we generate these resources from. And again, the 5 million in new construction that has yet to be completed for the calendar year. Based on these estimations, the owner of a current home valued at $100,000 would expect to see about 65, 67, in that $60 increase range, and then going up as shown. I want to get to the conclusion slide. You know, everything that goes into a levy, there's a lot of, they're not guesses. I mean, people are looking at these based mean, people are looking at these based on sound practices of growth values and how we've looked at construction permits. And we're all a community, so we know where the growth is happening and where it's not. But to respond to political decisions being made in Springfield, as well as some uncertainty we have on the local level as we finalize our estimates, and those calculations are played out, this is where we submit to you the estimated property tax for your vote tonight. Are there any questions?
Thank you, President Ross. Mr. Bush, what if the actual growth in the EAV falls short of the 2% estimate? What are the consequences of that?
The first would be the, can you go back about three slides to where it was the green and white? Yeah. The first impact would be on that extension levy line, where on the left, we have $52.2 million, and on the right, we have $54.4. Those are the operating levies, right, for the educational fund, the ONM fund, the operating dollars we receive. If the estimates come in less than those projected growth calculations, then the dollars received would be less. The homeowner would pay less, obviously, and we would have less to work with from a revenue standpoint. However, that bond and interest amount is fixed. So while the levy extension is variable and, for the most part, pegged to growth, that debt is actually fixed. So there's two different things going on there. Does that explain it for you?
To some extent. Thank you for that. Looking back, I went back and looked at some of the records in terms of what we'd levied and what we'd actually received over the last couple of years. And it seemed to me that we ended up receiving maybe 97% to 98.5% of what we levied due to other factors. And it always seems to fall a bit short. And I guess my concern is, is that part of this thinking here? Have we overshot it enough so that we don't find ourselves coming up short, number one, on the EAV, and number two, on just the actual amount? That's based on collections, I believe. So if it's not collected, we don't get it, even though we've levied it.
Correct. I believe our average collection rate is 98.9.
Okay.
Over the last 10 years.
So 1.1% of what we levy doesn't show up on the average?
And that goes into the estimated growth calculations. That's one of those assumptions we use.
All right.
So when I ask the county, where are they thinking they're seeing growth, and they come back with one, then typically, I tend to add one to an EAV estimate in balance.
So that's the way to address that, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. There's another topic, after we finish this discussion, I wanted to bring up two, but I don't know if it's particularly, deals with the other bond issues. So maybe we address the questions, other questions here, then we can talk about that as well. It doesn't deal with our levy at this moment, but it will have some impact on that if we pursue it.
Okay.
Any other questions on this, Mr. Bush's presentation? Did you have something else on this issue?
Yes, if I could, report back to the board. Last Monday, we had a discussion about asking the city council for some help with a quarter percent or quarter cent sales tax. And Tuesday evening, I spoke before the council and made a presentation on that. And we had sent them a three-page letter that same evening of the board meeting. And then I went to the council meeting the next evening and spoke for about four or five minutes. And they were very courteous about that. It's not clear what they're going to do on a sales tax, but my sense is, watching that discussion and then the further discussion on Thursday night where they were dealing with budget issues, I don't know what they're going to do on a sales tax, but my sense is that that will not be our request for a quarter cent sales tax on top of what they're proposing would not be promoted or supported by the council. So what that means is, we were putting that in front of them to talk about, if we have to do health, life, safety, bonds, it would either be funded through an increased levy for the bonds, and do that before the deadline of March 1st, which would be set by Senate Bill 318, or have the interest and principal on an annual basis paid for by a quarter cent sales tax increase. So with that in mind, and assuming that the council is probably not going to do that, that means at some point, we're going to have to do some discussion about a debt offering. And when I asked how long it would take to do a debt offering, the answer I got was between, what, six and eight weeks?
It's, my experience with that is, it's been closer to the six.
Okay.
There is a cut, well, there's sort of a left turn in that conversation, too, because on Friday, the Illinois State Board of Education opened an application window for qualified school construction bonds as well, which is essentially a redistribution of IRA funds that were unspent, the state's allocation of that. This would be a mechanism where we could pursue those at low to no interest loans over the life of the bond, so I would add three considerations to that. But it would still be debt.
Right.
But how much we ultimately pay, that would be the preference.
And would the Senate Bill 318 deadline apply to those as well?
That's a question I actually have out there for our advisors that I'm waiting response on today.
Well, my concern here is that we only have so many more meetings before we run out of time to make a debt issuance before that deadline, assuming that that deadline is going to be here. But the problem is, and we heard from Dr. Phillips a couple of weeks ago, once Senate Bill 318 passes, you can't go back in time and fix that. So we have to do something in anticipation of that, or we potentially lose that opportunity. We're rolling the dice once we get to that point.
Well, I would also add that the, Mr. Adler has sent out, as part of the building committee's responsibility, that we review health, life, safety, category A spending. And one of my smart goals is actually to address 50% of category A spending and come up with a revenue stream to address those needs. If we go to the qualified school bond route, again, that would be the most preferred, but we'd be looking at anywhere from a three to a $4 million issue. The conversation for the building committee, I think, which we're trying to schedule for early December, and keep that conversation going, which is what I think you're addressing, is
Right.
How do we address these timelines on a GANT basis, right?
Right.
How are we clicking through?
Back into the timing on this, and then there's not a lot of slack time, especially with the holidays.
And if you look at our health, life, safety, category A, there's roughly 20 schools that are on that list of our 28 buildings that have some form of need of category A. So the discussion we need to come up with is, how do we prioritize and package that into a remodeling construction bond?
Okay.
And then address it on priority needs. Do we fund it all in relation to a professional or a goal, or do we capitalize on the market presence of this qualified school bond opportunity as well to respond in due time to 318 and the availability of the application window, assuming there's not a sales tax?
Right.
So those are conversations we're a week away from.
Okay. Well, I was just raising this point so that we don't let the time slip away here, and that if we have to do something, we do it so that we are making that issuance before that deadline. And my concern there would be, even though it might be prioritizing category A requirements, if we don't have the opportunity after that time to do some things, maybe we need to do more than that in the initial phase. That's a judgment that's going to have to be made by you and your staff, so.
I would say if we qualify under the qualified school bond construction, our qualified school construction bond criteria, which is basically shovel-ready, high-need district, that then it comes to how much, what's the sizing that the board wants to pursue, and how do we get that ready, and just do category A, or maybe even reach into category B? And how do we, I would make my recommendations into that conversation and let you deliberate in due time. But I don't think we're off the schedule too much.
Well, we have one meeting in December, and if we don't get it dealt with at that meeting, we've got the next meeting, I believe, the 11th of January. So.
I would say that, you know, we can always call a special meeting if need be. However, I would feel more comfortable if we had some kind of definitive answer, or somewhat of a definitive answer from the city of Peoria saying no, yea or nay, rather than just, you know, assume not. But we could call, if we need to, we'll call a special meeting of this board.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything on that? So I think, at this point, maybe, I don't know, Mr. Bush, would you be the person to follow up with the city, or Dr. Karat, follow up with them to see, you know, if it's even in their radar? Okay, Dr. Karat.
Mr. Cloyde, I guess relative to later in our agenda, is it your preference to hold on the property tax item until we kind of sort out the rest, or?
No.
I think we have to do that.
We have to do that regardless. This is just in addition to that. So, and we wouldn't be voting on any of the debt issues, but I just wanted to get the wheels turning here because of the timing. You don't know what you're going to run into when you're trying to do a debt issue. And if the Federal Reserve acts in the next couple of weeks to do things on interest rates, that could also change and upset the bond market as well. So who knows? Lot of moving parts.
Anything else? Anything else for Mr. Bush? Thank you. District report card data. Is that another PowerPoint?
Yes.
Sorry. It is, okay.
I'll go quickly.
Some of us actually enjoy PowerPoint slides, so you don't have to feel bad about it.
Dr. Zaleski.
All right. Good evening. So I'm going to try to do a short presentation reviewing some of our Illinois report card data that was recently released. So hopefully, everyone's familiar with the Illinois report card. We're going to be talking about last year's data that was currently posted for this year for us to review. It's a great opportunity for the community to also look at our district data on the Illinois report card and look at some of the trends over time that we've seen. Okay. So this doesn't include, this presentation's not going to include all of the data that's available on the report card, for the sake of time, but just some snapshots of the district data and some of our trends that we've seen over time. So here, you see just an overall district snapshot, and in the red parentheses, you see the relationship to our state averages. And we'll talk through these specific items throughout the presentation as well. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that some of our special programs and schools are not included in the school count as the data for these students is reported to the state, to their home school, or the school that they would have attended if they were not enrolled in these special programs. And that also Quest Academy is included in this data as well. Okay, so let's talk about some of our academic progress information. Unfortunately, the state has yet to release our park data for last year. As soon as that data is released, we'll make sure that we share that information with you and the community. Okay, so next, we have our ACT average score. So we see the English, math, reading, science, the district compared to the state, and then also our composite score. So we see an average of 18 compared to the state average of 21. Okay, next, we have a graph that displays the number of freshmen who have earned at least five full-year course credits, credits, or 10 semester credits, and have earned no more than one semester F in a core course. So Peoria Public Schools has 74% of freshmen on track compared to the state average of 83.4%. Okay, so this graph shows the percentage of students who graduated with a regular high school diploma within four years, from 2011 to 2015. So currently, 65% of students have graduated with a regular high school diploma within four years compared to the state average of 86%. So the next graph shows the percentage of students who have achieved a combined score of at least 21 on the ACT, which the state uses as an indicator of college readiness. So 26% of students in Peoria Public Schools are deemed college-ready compared to the state average of 46%. So this graph displays the percentage of students who have graduated with a regular high school diploma and who are enrolled in a two- or four-year college within 12 months of graduation. So here, we see 62% of students enrolled in a two- or four-year college within 12 months of graduation compared to the state average of 70%. So please note that this is an increase of 6% from 2014. So next, we'll look at some of our district environmental data. So here, we have our instructional spending. We can see the trend of that instructional spending compared to the state average as well over time. Okay, next, we have our operational spending. Same thing. We see that trend of operational spending compared to the state average over time. And then we have a breakdown of our percentages of revenue that were received from local, state, and federal funds. Then we have the percentage of each type of expenditure, including instruction, general administration, support services, and other expenditures. This graph shows the average number of students in each class. So the average class size in Peoria Public Schools is 20 students compared to the state average of 21 students. The next graph shows the total number of school days in which the district provide at least five hours of instruction. So Peoria Public Schools has 174 school days compared to the state average of 175 school days. So mobility rate is the percentage of students who transfer in or out of the district between the first and last day of school. This does not include graduates. So Peoria Public Schools' mobility rate is 21% compared to the state average of 12%. And we can see that trend over time in this graph as well.
I have a question about that. Is that moving in and out of the district, or is that moving from one school to another?
In and out of the district.
So have we changed the way we calculate that?
Not my knowledge.
Because that 55% looks substantially higher. I know we had discussions about it at one point.
Before, I think it was, it was from one school to the next, when it was like 55.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I will call the state, and I can find that out for sure and get back to you with that answer.
It strikes me as that we're not measuring the same things there.
We were thinking also, we talked about it today, in terms of the rationale for this huge gap. We were thinking maybe data integrity.
Yeah.
It's very unusual.
They may be looking at in and out of the district. We may be looking at from school to school. I don't know how it's going to be.
It's usually a combination of both, school to school, and, I mean, you're in, you're out, you're in, you're out, whether it's school to school, or, you know, within internally or externally. A move is a move.
Yeah.
But data integrity is a hypothesis.
It'd really be interesting to know what might have contributed to that difference.
Yeah, I think that's something that, we can look at other variables as well that we're collecting with some of the measures and the metrics that we've included in the strategic plan with SAS Enterprise Guide, to look at the influence of some of those other variables and see if they're statistically significant. So student attendance. So this graph shows the average daily attendance in the district. So Peoria Public Schools has a 92% attendance rate compared to the state average of 94%. Peoria Public Schools' high school dropout rate is 2%, which mirrors the state average. The next graph shows the percentage of students who miss 5% or more of school days per year without a valid excuse. per year without a valid excuse. So Peoria Public Schools has eighteen percent chronically truant students compared to the state average of nine percent. This is a reduction of nine percent from the previous school year. And the hope is that we can actually look at some of our other variables and our other data that we're collecting and see what indicators are statistically significant in relation to this variable as well.
I think another issue there is that we were counting those students who are suspended or expelled as truant. And I think we made a change in the policy of how that was done so that the number from those twenty-seven, twenty-five, and twenty-seven percent really aren't comparable to eighteen percent at this point. So when you go back and look at that data, you'll see that what was being counted has changed, and this is now consistent with the way the rest of the state does it.
Yes, okay.
We were inconsistent with that before that.
Okay. Okay, so next we're going to take a look at some of our student data. Okay, so we see total enrollment in this graph, and we see that there's been a slight but steady decline over the last five years in total enrollment. Here we see the racial and ethnic makeup of the school district for our students. Okay, so next, this graph shows the percentage of students eligible to receive free or reduced-price lunches, live in substitute care, or whose families receive public aid. So seventy-five percent of students in the school district are categorized as low-income students compared to the state average of fifty-four percent. Okay, next we'll get some of our educator information. Okay, so this chart displays the total number of teachers in the district and their racial and ethnic makeup. Okay, so next, the, this chart displays the relationship between the number of male and female teachers in the district. This also mirrors the state average, or approximately the state average. This chart displays the percentage of teachers who hold bachelor's degrees compared to those who hold master's degrees. So almost a fifty-fifty split. This is an interesting chart. It displays the people or student-to-teacher ratio in the district at the elementary and high school level. So Peoria Public Schools has a smaller student-to-teacher ratio than the state average for both levels. This chart displays the three-year average percentage of teachers returning to work at the district. So Peoria Public Schools has a seventy-eight point three percent retention rate compared to the state average of eighty-five percent. So finally, this chart shows the average salary for teachers over the past five years compared to the state average. So this data is used to.
Before you, would you go back one?
No problem.
That obviously does not represent changes, reductions in compensation. That has got to be a change in the mix of individuals, correct?
Since this data was collected and reported last.
More new, more teachers earlier in their career. So this is, this represents the average, our average went from fifty-five to about, what, forty-seven, something like that?
Is that, is that based on actual salaries though, or on, on what is in the contract?
It's based on the actual salary data. So we, we get the information from, and report to the state.
Lot of retirements and so forth.
Well, given the turnover ratio, I, I mean, it's, it's not surprising.
Yeah, because they're younger. And this is, all of this is pulled from Illinois State Board of Education.
Right.
So we, we're just presenting it to you. We're supposed to do it in thirty, thirty days of release.
And there's, there's, when you go to the website, the Illinois Report Card website, there's a lot of nice tools where you can kind of dive a little bit deeper into some of these graphs, which I think is, is a nice feature that they recently added as well. So our, our goal with this data is to help us identify our areas of strengths and weaknesses within the district, and help us address those weaknesses through our strategic plan. This data, we're also going to, you know, monitor this throughout the school year, and we report, of course, this data back to the state annually. But we hope to continue updating you on a regular basis as we have new data, new information, especially with some of the other metrics and indicators that we're using as part of our strategic plan to delve a little bit deeper into some of these issues and paint a wider picture with more factors for us to consider about what may be contributing to some of these trends. And that's it.
Any questions? The board members have any more questions?
Could you, could you send us a copy of that, please?
Of course, of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Reading Buddies presentation. Good evening.
I'm going to give you a little bit of information on the purpose for Reading Buddies, the procedural steps we take to get it operational, and give a little bit of kudos to some people who have ensured that it stays operational this year, given some of the staffing transitions that have taken place throughout this year. Okay?
And you are?
What's that?
And you are?
Marcy Burdette Steele, because I'm the new social studies literacy coordinator for the district.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think last time I was here, I, I got all dressed up for you, so I apologize. This time I did not wear a dress, so I, I'm sorry. The NEKCE Foundation reported that third grade is an important pivotal year in a child's education. Third grade is when students shift from learning to read to reading to learn. And students who are not on grade level in third grade begin having difficulty comprehending the written material that's necessary for the educational process. So therefore, Peoria Public Schools is trying to continue its volunteer Reading Buddies program in our primary buildings. The goal of this program is to provide third-grade students who struggle with reading fluency an opportunity to consistently work one-on-one with an adult tutor on a weekly basis. The hope is that each student will feel encouraged to read and will actually enjoy reading with somebody and having that close relationship around reading. Okay? A Reading Buddy is a volunteer that typically commits sixty minutes a month in, in one visit to an assigned school to help increase his or her student's reading skills. Those volunteers are, participated in a ninety-minute training earlier this semester where they learned how to work with those students, and they were given time to get familiar with the materials that was going to be used during that program. Those materials are called the Ravens Court materials. They're categorized as high-interest, high-interest chapter books in a variety of genres that align to the decoding patterns that are present in the corrective reading program that's used in all the district schools right now. These materials have already been distributed to all the schools, so they're ready to roll in those buildings. To ensure the safety of our students, we make sure that every single volunteer goes through a thorough background check. They complete a volunteer packet, and then they do the background check. And no volunteer can go into the building to work with these students until all that has gone through. So that's where the kind of, the stalling for getting it running as fast has happened this year because we had a little gap in the people who helped make this program run. Luckily, Susan Martin, she's the interventionist at Northmore, stepped in to kind of get that process rolling again while we were waiting for people to get into their roles. So she deserves the credit for us to, for still having Reading Buddies operational this year. We're now at the point where each volunteer is going to participate in orientation in their own buildings. Where he or she will meet the teachers that their students will have, and they'll learn the, the school-specific procedures that they need to know to get into the building where they'll meet with kids and so forth. Once that is completed, the volunteers will begin working with their assigned students one-on-one for twenty minutes of uninterrupted reading with an adult reading buddy. This is typically done during the reading workshop time, so no third grader in our district is losing instructional time with their teacher. Each team of volunteers is assigned a group of students to meet with weekly on the same day and the same time each week. Thankfully, some of the volunteers were able to commit at least once a week, so they're able to see more students than a team who only, of people who comes once, once a week. Each person comes maybe this week, the next person the next week, the next person the next week. So some schools are able to get more kids seen depending on the rate at which their volunteers come. So the entire process will officially begin the following, right after probably Christmas break. The following schools have Reading Buddies assigned to them at this time. Woodrow Wilson, Thomas Jefferson, Charter Oak, Whittier, Franklin, Hines, Roosevelt, Treewin, and Lincoln. To date, right now, we have eighty-five volunteers who are willing to begin working with our students. Those volunteers come from a variety of organizations in the Peoria area. A large amount come from SEFQ. Other volunteers come from Southside Bank, Commerce Bank, federal companies, First Mid Illinois Bank, First United Methodist Church, and Illinois Mutual. So we have quite a few people from quite a few organizations willing to help our kids. And we are extremely grateful to them. I know last year I got to see for the first time this in action, and our students look forward to this every single week, getting to read with, with an individual who really takes pride in watching these kids grow. They were more than willing to leave lunchtime with their friends. They were more than willing to, I mean, anytime they could see their Reading Buddy, they were excited to do it. So it's another one of those things that we're trying to do to help raise the reading achievement. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Based on the volunteers, how are they distributed throughout the different schools?
There's, there is, they're allowed to pick a school, a preference. For example, SEFQ has worked many years with Roosevelt. I know that for a fact. I believe, who's the, where do yours come from?
Illinois Mutual.
Illinois Mutual. So there's a lot of companies that have a relationship already with schools, and they tend to go back to those schools. So that's how they tend to be placed. If there's a school that has a need and we have a surplus, we can assign them to a certain building, but that tends to be how they're assigned.
The goal is, because Marcy's knew, and the goal is to connect, find Reading Buddies for every building. So we've just, we've just begun.
Right. That's why, that's why I mentioned Susan Martin. She is one of the interventionists in the district. She deserves a lot of credit for making sure this is still going on in our building, in all of our buildings. So, because there's quite a bit of a process that has to be taken care of and organized to make sure that they can all get into each building. So.
I would like to see Reading Buddies, robust Reading Buddy program, for example, at Treewin, at Lincoln, at Keller, at actually all the buildings. And we can work progressively from elementary to middle, and we're continuing to have conversations about that. So we're happy we have about eighty-five volunteers, and we'll continue to recruit. And if Susan wants to add anything to that.
The transition was a challenge.
Yeah, I think we're ready to roll now, but being so close to the Christmas break, we want to make sure everything's completely ready to roll as soon as they come back. So.
Great job, Marcy.
Thanks. Thank you.
Marcy, before, this may not be the correct place, but you're mostly working with companies, but what about individuals?
There are some people who are just individual volunteers as well.
So as we, as we encourage parents.
Absolutely.
To, you know, become.
Anybody.
Partners.
Anybody in the area who, if somebody wants to drive an hour, by all means, feel free to drive an hour. They just have to fill out a volunteer pack. We run a background check, and then we can assign them to a school.
So I mean, if you, if my child is at a particular school and I want to volunteer there.
Absolutely.
Do I have to go through the background check?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of one of the things that's been kind of, there's a lot of people are repeat volunteers, but every single year for the safety of our students, we need to complete a volunteer background check, you know?
So they sign up through the website, or at least request a package through the website?
They can request, they can email me. I have it saved. I can send it to people. The schools have it. I've sent it out to all the schools. So if there's a certain school they want to work with, they can probably ask the interventionist, and they can give them a packet. So we can probably, we can put it on the website as well. It is on there already? Okay.
Okay.
First, that could be a weekly update to the city. Let's advertise Reading Buddies program and give them some contact information. Because as we work with, you know, other organizations to try to get parents involved, we need to know that process with the human services and that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the approval of the minutes from November ninth. Could I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from November ninth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Would you please call a roll?
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Scottson?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Leffler?
Aye.
Mr. Adelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, six ayes, motion here.
Thank you. We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of equality education for the students of Peoria District One Fifty schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we are all, that you all have First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that three minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts. So we've installed a, what looks like a permanent comment box now for your convenience. Now, Board Secretary will collect those comments after each board meeting to compile and share with the board and superintendent. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for the, for our records. Each speaker has three minutes, and no one under age eighteen may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker this evening is Mr. Terry Knapp. Welcome, Mr. Knapp.
Yes, good evening. Along the line of the tax levy discussion, I think it would be wise that this board entertain the public to come to the podium and speak, specifically give a time limit to the public on the tax levy situation. I want you to remember that fifteen years ago, this district had sixty million dollars in surplus. Sixty million. Mr. Bush, if you care to check back, fifteen years ago, nineteen ninety-nine, there was a sixty million dollar surplus. That all went away. We're now in debt, what, twelve, thirteen million dollars or something? So it's at seventy-two million dollars in, in fifteen years. And the number one reason is that we've recklessly spent this money. We went and bought a company here, the Edison Corporation, Mr. Chris Whittle and Mr. Ben O'Schmidt, that set this back, set this community back forty-five million dollars. Then they passed an IPO, went to public offering, went to thirty million dollars a share, and then went to twelve cents, or fourteen cents, excuse me, fourteen cents a share. And then they were kicked out of Peoria by people larger than this board sitting right here. People lost their shirts. They were fleeced in this situation, and now they're gone. They were gone after ten years, eleven years, whatever, but they took forty-five million dollars of that sixty million dollar surplus. The other things we spent money on recklessly, I'm not going to enumerate here, but you know what they are. Many of you sat here the last five years in particular and watched this happen. The P cards, you know, the lunches and the breakfast paid for by, for two staff who use their P cards, fifty-four P cards out there. Money went down the toilet. Last meeting, Mr. Cloyd suggested that we get this twenty-five, or this quarter of percent sales tax, and then we not just take the two million dollars that it's going to generate, but we go sell bonds and get twenty million. Let's get twenty million, and we'll soak the taxpayers, the, for ten years, and we'll spend the money now. We'll take the thirty-seven million that we promised the taxpayers we would not spend. We're going to take that thirty-seven million dollars. The bonds are up in, what, two thousand thirty-two, and, and we're going to spend it now. Let's spend it now. We already got the bonds at Central and Lincoln that were already spent, and the taxpayers got to pay for those bonds. This is the most reckless society I've ever seen, at the state level, the federal level, and the local level, in the way we spend money and taxpayers' money ahead of time. You ought to be ashamed of yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Ms. Sharon Cruz.
I believe inflated grades, no summer school, and Compass Learning prevent District One Fifty students from achieving optimum academic success. In the past, I have tried and been unable, able to get answers to these questions. In the past, I have tried and been unable, able to get answers to these questions about Compass Learning. How many minutes a day and for what length of time, weeks, grading period, semester, does a student spend in order to recover credits for an F in a class? Is all the time spent on the computer? For what specific courses is Compass Learning used? Does the material covered correlate with the curriculum guide for each subject? Are students required to do any work outside of class as expect, as is expected in the class that was failed? What is the grading system? Are daily grades given? What determines the final grade, and is it pass, fail, or A, B, C, D, F? I definitely am of the opinion that Compass Learning is primarily for the purposes of keeping failing or expelled students from being held back, increasing the graduation rate, and eliminating the need for summer school. I do not believe that it is of much help in preparing students for college or jobs. I believe summer school is good for students for the following reasons. It allows students to make up required failed classes. It provides extra time to acquire skills and knowledge missed the first time around. I found the three-hour class periods allowed me more time to spend with individual students. Also, students weren't distracted by a full schedule of classes. Concentrating on one subject, usually their most difficult one, helped them catch up for the following school year. I have heard negative comments about Compass Learning, but please ask teachers to offer their opinions. Also, high schools' academic problems indicate that something is going wrong at the middle school and even primary levels. Discipline problems could well be major, major factors there. As for inflated grades, one of my former students wrote, "Working hard to make a C teaches us to work hard. Easy As and Bs do not teach us to work hard. The bottom line is working hard teaches us to persevere in order to succeed in life." Please research the data that reveals which practices are leading to success and which are not helping students reach their full potential. Please, let's pool our ideas to find the solutions for District 150. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Are there any response to, to audience presentations? Any response? Unnecessary. Okay, next on the agenda is our information items. And the first one is interventionist smart goals. Beth and Sue Caldwell. Beth, I want to say Tressler? Tressler, like the, okay, Beth. Sorry about that.
Tresker.
Is it the same?
Yes, Tresker.
Okay, Tressler. All right. Tresker.
Hi. Did you bring any bakery goods with you?
If I could have brought bakery goods and not had to talk, I would have been glad to do it.
Okay. Oh, you haven't. I thought you were letting it up.
Okay, I'm Beth Tresker. I'm the interventionist at Woodrow Wilson, and I'm always very proud to say that I've spent my entire life in District 150. This is my last year, but I'm always proud to say that. Chris Copeland, get over here. I had to pay a young teacher to do their PowerPoint.
Thanks for your service and dedication, Beth.
Before I start, I'd like to explain that tonight I'm going to talk about differentiated math instruction at Woodrow Wilson. Each day, our students, kindergarten through fourth grade, have two math periods. They have one math period, that's the whole group math instruction. And this is when the teacher is teaching the Grade Level Engage New York lesson that's very rigorous, it's Common Core aligned, we have very high expectations. We make sure that every student in the buildings is exposed to their grade level curriculum. But then we also have another math period that we call Math Workshop, and this is when differentiated instruction happens. It's when we meet the individual needs of every child in the building. So tonight, I'd like to quickly talk you through how we use our NWEA data to do this. Last year, Susan Gobine developed this chart, and what this chart does, it breaks the NWEA National Norms Percentiles down. But Susan also color-coded it. So not only is it broken down by the percentiles, but at the top, it gives that color-coded guide to where the students test out what we need to be doing during the differentiated time, whether it's intense interventions, strategic support, whether it's enrichment. So the first thing that we do at Woodrow Wilson is we, after we do our fall testing, we take a look at the data, and we break it down to give a snapshot of the building and of each grade level. And this year when we did it, I have to say, it was very eye-opening for us, and it was a really good thing for us to do as teachers. Because I think over the past few years, we have put so much focus on our struggling students, and that's very important, and it's very necessary. But we also have so many children who are right where they need to be, and we need to make sure that we keep them right where they need to be the next round of testing. And then we also have children who are high achievers that need to have some enrichment. So we do this, first of all, to get the whole school in the grade level. Then the next step is each teacher individually looks at his or her own class to get this breakdown of where their class falls into the different percentiles. Then, the next step, after we've done that, and the teachers have their NWEA data, I think it's very important that we do a check and a balance to that data. Because these are young kids taking tests. Sometimes when kindergartners go into the computer lab, they're being five-year-olds. They're thinking about Frozen, or they're thinking about a wrestler, or they're thinking about their granny. So we need to make sure that the scores that we got from those kids really are accurate. And unfortunately and sadly, we have our older kids that come to school sometimes with adult worries. So we need to take those NWEA scores and kind of compare it to something else. So what we use at Woodrow Wilson for a check and a balance, all of our kindergarten through second grade kids take the MAP Early Numeracy Screener. Our third and fourth graders take the EZCBM Common Course State Standards Benchmark. So we have this data to kind of compare to that NWEA benchmark, so that we know if we really have accurate information to proceed with. Once we feel good about the data that we have, it's time to start planning the instruction. So with the new web-based NWEA, there is a feature that's called the Learning Continuum, and it is the most fabulous thing for differentiated instruction that you can imagine. With a click of the mouse, you go into a strand of math, and you get the RIT ranges, and off to the side, and you can see names. It shows you in a class exactly where every student tested out, but with this Learning Continuum, the really fascinating thing is, it shows the skills that right now each child is ready to learn. And right now, this is what we need to be instructing those kids on. And you can see there's on the right side where the names show up, this groups for a teacher. So that, that's done. We know the kids that need to be in the same group, and we need to know exactly what skills we need to be instructing on to move those children forward. So then the next step is to go into Pinpoint. Pinpoint is where so much of our curriculum lives. And again, thanks to Susan Gobine, when teachers go into Pinpoint for math, she's put all kinds of folders in there. So from NWEA, we know exactly what skills we need to be teaching. Pinpoint gives us the activities and the lessons to teach with. There are math interventions for the kids that need to have intervention during the differentiated time. There are enrichment folders for our kids who need to be challenged. And the one thing I didn't put in the Pinpoint, for some of our kids who are right where they need to be right now, that we want to make sure that we keep there, and my co-teachers at Woodrow get tired of hearing me say that, but I just think those kids, we have to be very cognizant of keeping those kids and not letting them slip during this differentiated time. Those kids sometimes are getting some reteaching from the Engage New York lessons. So I'm going to take a step back now to the kids who are actually in interventions. Some children, from that beautiful rainbow chart, we have in intense interventions. Sometimes that means being in formal Tier Two, which is part of the RTI process. Sometimes it just means being in an intervention. But these are the children that we need to make sure that we're progress monitoring, that we are watching the data, that we are assessing them regularly to know if what we're doing is working or not, if we need to change what we're doing. And another part of this web-based NWEA package that we got this year are some tests. First of all, there's the screener, but then there are also skills tests that come with NWEA. And what's so helpful about this is that it's so important when you have students in interventions to make sure that what you're assessing really matches the instruction that you're giving. These tests let us do that. In a primary school, pretty much a hundred percent of the kids that need interventions in math, there are some number sense deficits. And this, these, these tests are set up, there's a set of number sense tests, and then there's a set of computation tests. The kids who are in Tier Two, a hundred percent pretty much are in the, the number sense tests. Some of our other kids who struggle, but maybe are not in the Tier Two, but are getting interventions, the computation tests are, are good for. It's right there, it's, the teachers don't have to be searching for the assessments, they don't have to be coming up with the assessments, and we know it matches what we're doing in the instruction. So this has been a huge help, and I'm very excited that it came before I left, because it's just structured everything, and it's really been helpful for our teachers, and I know that we're with integrity, giving the intervention, and then progress monitoring. And so my last slide is Math Workshop, because math, one math lesson does not fit all learning needs. What I've just talked about with our differentiated time makes up thirty to forty-five minutes of the school day, but it is just such a vital, vital thing, because we truly are meeting the needs of every student at Woodrow Wilson. So thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Good evening. I'm Sue Caldwell, the interventionist at Thomas Jefferson School, and I will be talking about the reading interventions. I'll be talking just about the reading interventions at Thomas Jefferson. However, I want to say that the interventions at all the District 150 schools are very similar, but every school puts their own little twist on it, depending on the needs that those students have in each building. So again, we begin with data. In our kindergarten through fourth grade classrooms, the teachers give the students a test that's called DIBELS. It's a reading indicator test. There's several subtests in that. It starts with letter naming and letter sounds in our kindergarten and first grade level. And then when we get up to our third and fourth grade level, we work on fluency, accuracy, and comprehension. For our fifth and sixth grade, they take an EZCBM test that focuses on fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And then in addition to that, we also have our NWA that is given for our second through sixth grade students. We look at grade level team meetings, we make decisions about our data. Everything is based on data. Similar to how Beth showed the rainbow chart with math, we have that for reading as well. And from there, then we use our DIBELS and our EZCBM data that helps us pinpoint the exact reading skills that our students need to work on. According to our data, the teachers will group their students in their classroom based on their reading needs. These groups are flexible groups, so the students can move into different groups as their needs change. This is a chart on progress monitoring, and our teachers monitor our students' reading growth by progress monitoring our students on a regular basis. Our most struggling students are progress monitored weekly, our students that are just below grade level about every two weeks, and then our students on grade level monthly. If you can see at this, our, we have benchmarks that are at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. This shows us here that a third grade student should be reading seventy words a minute in the fall, and down at the winter benchmark, they should be down to eighty, or up to eighty-six words. We have months here, so on, in October, they should be up to seventy-four words per minute, and then in November, seventy-eight, and December, eighty-two. So the teachers can look and see how they're progressing through the months to see if our students are still on benchmark or not, and if they need some extra interventions between fall and winter benchmark. In addition to the teachers looking at data, we are trying to get our students more involved in the data. So the students actually place a little dot sticker on this chart according to their NWA score. Our goal is that our students, this will help them, put forth their best effort on their next NWA test. We also have a school-wide intervention time. This is a time where the entire school does reading interventions for forty-five minutes. We have several different interventions going on at this time. We have reading mastery groups, corrective reading groups, skill strategy groups, enrichment groups, our HOW group, which is our high ability learning group. Having all the interventions at the same time allows us to place our students all at their instructional reading level. This is a picture of a reading mastery group kindergarten and a fourth grade corrective reading group. This happens to be our art teacher and our music teacher. We've trained all of our teachers in our building on our DI programs, so it allows us to have smaller groups during this time. This happens to be a third grade intervention, or enrichment group, and their assignment was to research Thanksgiving first. So the first one, it's kind of hard to read, but it was in sixteen twenty, and it was about when the pilgrims landed on Plymouth Rock. The next child did some research and found out in nineteen twenty-seven, it was when the first giant balloons were at the Macy's Day Thanksgiving Parade. And this is one of my favorites. In nineteen thirty-four, it was the first NFL game on Thanksgiving Day. And this happens to be the Detroit Lions and the Chicago Bears. So I had to do a little research of my own, and I did find out that the Chicago Bears did defeat the Lions nineteen to sixteen on that day, so. I don't know if that would happen this year, but anyway. This is our fifth and sixth grade HOW group. They were reading a novel, and this is a story board timeline, and the picture represents one main event in the chapter. And then the students, you can't see it very well, but they had to summarize and put three main events with a small group together. And then what the teacher had them do for vocabulary words, they each had to have two words. They went on the computer, they researched, they found the definition, a picture, had used it in a sentence, and then they each made a slide on each one, and then they put together as a PowerPoint. And the students actually studied from that PowerPoint, and then they were given a quiz. So the students are taking responsibility for their own learning. So that's pretty exciting. And in addition to all of the reading interventions that we have in place, we also have tutors. We have four positions at our school this year, which is funded through our Title I funds, and our tutors work with our tier groups. They also work with our reading mastery, corrective reading, and they do some of our walk-to math groups. So thank you for your time, and I hope you have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. [applause] Lights, camera. [sighs]. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act, Dr. Cora.
I am thanking the interventionists. They did an amazing job.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Thanks for your hard work every day and guidance, not only to staff, but kids and families and volunteers. So since our last board meeting, report on November ninth, we received five new Freedom of Information requests. Of these new requests, one was filled. There are five pending requests noted on the November ninth board report. Out of those, four were filled. So we've received one hundred and five requests for this calendar year, and the running total in terms of dollar amount is four thousand thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. Mr. Floyd.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Number one is gifts to the school district. This meeting totaling $16,223, and year-to-date, $61,534.75. The proposed action is that the following donations be accepted, and letters of appreciation sent to the donors, with corrections as follows. Products valued at $50 by AZZ Pure Educators to TreeWinn. Popcorn supplies valued at $64 by Grace's Table Ministries. Uniform shirts valued at $500 by Grace's Table Ministries, the Seventh Day Adventist Church to TreeWinn K8 School. Learning incentives valued at $509 by Family and Consumer Science at Bradley University to TreeWinn. Arts and crafts items valued at $100 by Marilyn Woods to Richwoods High School's Art Department. And TV studio equipment valued in excess of $15,000 by Dave Lenny of Bradley University to Richwoods High School. And our thanks to all of those donors. Item number two is payment of bills. Item number three, the Human Resources report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, purchase of front-end loader for building and grounds. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a front-end loader from Berkey's for use by buildings and grounds. Three bids were obtained by the district, and they are listed as follows. Berkey's, $97,850. Altorfer, $112,020. Martin Equipment, $123,500. It has been suggested moving forward the purchase from Berkey's, who has the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Item number six, the Commerce Bank lease purchase of the 2015 bid end loader. Proposed action is that the Board of Education authorize staff to execute a legal lease with its commercial bank institution, Commerce Bank, for an amount to satisfy the purchase of a 2015 end loader, as identified through competitive bidding. The current end loader is over 25 years old and require $8,000 in maintenance expense to survive an average 2015, '16 winter season. Staff held a competitive sealed bid process in October 2015 and received pricing of $97,850 for the lowest responsible responsive bid. Commerce Bank has quoted an annual rate at 1.89%, with three payments of approximately $34,600 each. The total lease purchase would then be $103,800. This remains lower than the second lowest responsible responsive bid. Property tax levy, the proposed action that the Board of Education request a total levy as followed. We hereby certify that we require the sum of $29,000, I'm sorry, $29,671,12 to be levied as a special tax for educational purposes, and the sum of $6,805,278 to be levied as a special tax for operations and maintenance purposes, and the sum of $2,722,111 to be levied as a special tax for transportation purposes, and the sum of $680,527 to be levied as a special tax for a working cash fund, and the sum of $3,100,000 to be levied as a special tax for municipal retirement purposes, and the sum of $2,850,000 to be levied as a special tax for social security purposes, and the sum of $868,721 to be levied as a special tax for fire prevention, safety, energy conservation, disabled accessibility, school security, and special repair purposes, and the sum of $6,700,000 to be levied as a special tax for tort immunity purposes, and the sum of $544,422 to be levied as a special tax for special education purposes, and the sum of $668,721 to be levied as a special tax for leasing of educational facilities or computer technology or both, and temporary relocation expense purposes, and the sum of $5,68,695 to be levied as a special tax for the sum of $11,969,204 to be levied as a special tax for bond and interest and PBC lease on the taxable property of our school district for the year 2015, a total levy of Item number eight, clerical revisions to policy 7:190 on student discipline. Proposed action is that the Board of Education, City of Pura, District 150, approve the attached clerical revisions to policy 7:190 on student discipline. Item number nine, proposed action is that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with Avid College for memberships, curriculum, and Avid Leader Training for the 2015, 2016 school year. The cost is $46,425, and is a 35% cost reduction from previous years due to diminished travel expectation. Avid is currently in 12 District 150 schools. And that completes the consent agenda this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second?
Do we need to ask if there's anything to be removed before we take a motion?
Okay.
Madam President.
Would anybody like to remove one of them?
I'd like to pull items five and six, please.
Five and six?
Yeah.
Any other? So, all items with the exception of five and six, could I have a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion on those items?
I would explain the item number eight on the revisions to the policy on 7190. In the process of putting the revised discipline policy in place, there was a numbering sequence error in terms of one additional disciplinary issue, and as a result of this, we are changing the numbering of that disciplinary action. It is not changed in terms of its content or nature. It was simply the word processing created a duplicate number, and we had to revise that. So, the policy remains the same, but the numbering is now clarified.
Any other comments or questions? Would you please call the roll? I was going to say, all in favor, please call the roll.
Mr. Floyd.
Aye.
Mrs. Coste, aye. Mrs. Jackson, sorry. Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, purchase of the front-end loader for building and grounds. Mr. Adler.
Yeah, I need to abstain due to the conflict of interest with my employer.
Okay, and is that the same for number six as well?
I felt that they were sequential, so it didn't make sense to vote on the other without this one first going through.
Ms. Wolf, I'll answer a question.
You have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question. Just for clarification, I'm assuming that we're doing the lease purchase so that we can spread it over three years rather than have the entire purchase price at once? I think it's the first time I've seen that come up.
Actually, when I, well, the second day I was here, I was asked to release the RFP for the end loader. And when we reviewed the actual line items to pay for it, we didn't have enough budgeted. So, this, given the condition of the current equipment, I think this is the safest, most practical approach to move forward.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would ask counsel, if we're not purchasing a piece of equipment that relates to a board member's employment, do they have to abstain? I mean, I understand your sensitivity there, but if we're not making a purchase of that brand of equipment, does that make a difference?
Well, I think it's a matter of discretion for the individual and how they feel in terms of voting on a given item. From a legal standpoint, it probably represents more potential conflict than an actual conflict.
Okay. Just giving you a little comfort there, Mr. Adler. No problem.
Well, the prudent thing to do is when you're in doubt, to abstain.
Right. And I understand that.
And certainly to disclose it.
Yes.
Well, I was going to ask a question of Mr. Bush. Will you relate the two, five and six?
The actual process we'll go through is that the board, if they vote for approval, will authorize staff to use budget funds to execute the purchase of the end loader. So, we'll call our salesman tonight and say, "The board approved the purchase." We'll go through the invoicing process, that'll cut a check. Those will go through the purchasing process that the board recently approved, so those will get all the reviews. That check will be issued, that delivery will be scheduled, we'll receive the end loader over the next couple of weeks. That will pass through the banking, our banking institution. Then as that's going forward, the documents for the lease that you see in the background, essentially we'll cut the check, and then the bank will reimburse us. They'll hold title for two years. We'll insure it as our property, and then once we make six payments, it's ours, free and clear.
Does everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Floyd.
I had to ask a couple of questions of this, and I just wanted to clarify them. One was if there was any operator training that was involved in the purchase, and I know that maybe something that's provided by the supplier of the equipment was number one, and number two, the question was, is this piece of equipment, can we drive it on the road, or do we have to put it on a flatbed to move it?
Well, it depends on who you mean by "we." We would want to train those that we employ.
Someone would be trained properly by the manufacturer's representatives.
Yes, this is, we put municipal plates on our vehicles, so this is transferring one of our municipal plates from the existing end loader to one the board will be voting on purchasing, and we will be pushing for manufacturer training of the, so that we're in compliance with both maintenance and driver training.
Yeah, and just operator safety as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions on items five and/or six?
I would move the approval of items number five and six.
I would say that.
Okay, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Floyd.
Aye.
Mrs. Coste, aye. Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
You should call, you should call.
Mr. Adler.
Abstain.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Deliberation agenda?
Item number, nope, thank you. Item number 10, expulsions. The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on that report dated November 23rd, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mr. Floyd.
Aye.
Mrs. Coste, aye. Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Item 11, expulsions with the expulsion to be held in abeyance. The proposed action is that the expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance, listed on the report dated November 23rd, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mr. Floyd.
Aye.
Mrs. Coste, aye. Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Item 12, the revocation of expulsions held in abeyance. The proposed action is that the revocation of expulsions held in abeyance, listed on the report dated November 23rd, 2015, be approved as presented.
Mr. Floyd.
Aye.
Mrs. Coste, aye. Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members? Yeah, I've got, I've got that on my list. You got a copy of this?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Under this, if no one else has anything, under this category, I'm going to put you pass those to the board. The item I'm going to, I'm passing around to you now is a couple of pages under the Illinois Association of School Boards Superintendent Search Planning Agenda. I have for your records in, for you to, if you have any questions or offer any comments on the agenda, and also the timeline for the superintendent search, tentative timeline. Does anybody have any questions on this, and/or like to make any suggestions?
I think it looks appropriate, and the timeframe looks good.
All right. I have asked Mr. Adler to assist me with the timeline, the agenda timeline relating to, you know, pulling the groups together for the interviews and surveys.
Good.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, report from board committees. Mr. Adler.
I don't know if it fits perfectly, but Mrs. Jackson and I had the opportunity to attend the Illinois Association of School Boards, Officers, and Administrators meeting here this past weekend, and participated in some excellent panels, talking about things that boards and schools around the state are dealing with. And I wanted to report back a little bit on what I learned and some things that may be of interest to the rest of the board and public. So, one of the big concentrations of sessions that I saw was really around the use of, they use the term "big data," which I don't particularly like, but using the data to find opportunities for their schools to improve and to really compare in terms, in a meaningful benchmarking way with other schools around the state. And approach I thought was pretty good, and for this particular group that was presenting involved a consultant, but I think we could do it probably more informally with peer institutions, is they really had a collaborative group that, of other peer institutions, so they look at district size, demographics, you know, various things, and talk about how they deal with funding, discipline, any big issues that they're struggling with, and collaborate on what's worked and what hasn't. And coupled with the data piece, in terms of looking at the, this particular consultant was taking all of the state compliance information and allowing them to kind of see exactly where they stood up against all those things that our research accountability officer just shared with us. So I thought that was pretty cool. And they'd really built a rapport around coming back every couple of weeks and talking about another hot topic for their districts. And they kind of had a pay-to-play model, which was if you didn't participate in the kind of informal surveys and share what your district was doing, you didn't get to stay in the group and learn what others were doing. I thought that was, that was pretty interesting. The other big one that I went to was on funding reform. I had a couple of state legislators and a couple of superintendents talk about many of the same challenges that we talk about in terms of funding, and also about the uncertainty with regards to what the state's really going to do, including the legislators, which is, I think, telling. But keyed us onto a nonprofit group called Illinois Vision 2020. And I don't know if this is something the board has discussed in the past, but they've apparently rallied on quite a few districts to sign on to supporting resolutions that include, you know, modifications to the state funding formula. And I looked at the map, and actually, we're one of the few in our own area that has not formally at least supported it. So I wondered if that was something the policy committee might take a look at. But I think overall, my takeaway from the conference is that we're certainly not alone in what we're doing, and some of the more innovative approaches that I saw were people who, I guess actively addressed that by seeking out, seeking out the input and the collective experience of the other districts, so all the more opportun- So, all the more opportunities that we can take advantage in that way, I think, the better for us.
Thank you. It was a quick report, Matt.
And first of all, I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to go. I think that both Dan and I were amazed at the organization of that group and how they handle over ten thousand people. But the workshops were just outstanding with wonderful speakers. I brought back a lot of information because I spent a lot of time going to those workshops that deal with school financing. It was important for me to learn and know as much as I can about school financing. The first day I got a chance to testify before the State Board of Education regarding school financing and how we're doing it now and what needs to happen, there were probably fifteen schools that testified about the dollars that they're not getting and the problem that they're having just educating children, the same thing we're going through. I hope that the members listened to what people had to say, because any time a school district gets thirty thousand dollars per child and other districts are getting six thousand or less, that's a problem for the state. And everybody talked about that. That was really enlightening to me to listen to what other districts are having to do and they're cutting. So that was quite an experience that we had, so. But wonderful speakers, wonderful information. I couldn't hardly carry my suitcase back because I made sure I had everything I think I needed to make me a better board member. Made sure I got to the new board member sessions to listen to what other people are doing. Might suggest, everybody in the room was asked, when you came on the board, did you get information about your school board and what's going on? And unfortunately, I hadn't gotten anything, but neither had anybody in the room. And one person in the back said, "Oh, I got this huge packet of what's going on." So I would suggest that going forth, that this board think about putting a packet together for new school board members, so they can begin to know even policies and, you know, things that's important to that new board member. I would suggest that, we weren't alone in that, and that room was packed, so I guess people decide to run, they get on the board, and you just be a board member by the seat of your pants from that point. So I would highly suggest that we put together a packet for new school board members.
I have to say, Ms. Jackson, I don't know where that went by the wayside in the last few years, but we did have a board packet for every new school board member, which was in a notebook and lots of good information and policies and everything that went by the wayside over the last five years, I believe. So, but we can resurrect that again. We can do that. Okay. And maybe next board meeting, we will have Ms. Dixon do a report, because there was some, she's very excited about all that she's learned at the lab. Okay, thank you. Anything else on board reports or committee reports?
The buildings committee is trying to finalize a date for our next meeting, but we're looking tentatively at next Friday, the fourth.
Okay. There will be information out on that through the secretary. Anything else for the good of?
We had a policy committee meeting last week, and a number of issues that we're working on, including Senate Bill one hundred and the implementation of that, and waiting for information from a number of sources before we take any real steps on drafting anything. We also looked at a number of other issues that could be addressed, and we'll meet again, I believe, the fourteenth, fourteenth of December is our next meeting on that. And we have some take-home assignments for people to follow up on that, so.
Thank you. Move for German?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is this kind of what you were looking for? Somebody asked me about it.